Good afternoon. Today is Monday, July 7. This is a work session, so I just need to remind you that there will be no votes taken at this meeting. It's discussion mostly. Item number one is water plan grant and Mr. Mase. Mr. Ramirez is going to come and speak to us about that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Pretty good.
Good. You made it through 4th of July.
Yeah, I made it through the weekend from hell.
I know the feeling.
Today I want to talk about a Monument Lake water plan grant. So, the grant is a 75-25. The 75 would come from the grant, about $360,000. The city's... well, no, 236,000. I mean, 263,000, I'm sorry. 360 is the overall cost. 263,000 would be from the grant. 97,000 would be from cash match. Okay, so what's driving this is a 2003 comprehensive dam safety evaluation. This was conducted by the State Engineers Office, Wheeler Engineering Consultants, and the City of Trinidad. By the City of Trinidad, I mean me. So, all high-hazard dams are required to conduct this evaluation. We are required to do this. A little bit of history about Monument Lake. It was constructed in 1933. We have a one-page 1927 design drawing, and it is the only documentation of design and construction. It's got a couple of handwritten notes by somebody who... somebody's great-grandfather. So, the grant will fund a geotechnical evaluation of the dam, and it was also determined the feasibility of a capacity enlargement. That's important. That's really important. I'm going to talk about that.
Repeat it for me.
Yeah.
What did you say?
It's also going to determine the feasibility of a capacity enlargement. In other words, more storage. So, the geotechnical study will determine if the dam needs any upgrades, and it will need... we want to bring it up to the same monitoring standards that we have at North Lake. So, we'll be installing monuments, pessometers, and that will allow staff to monitor the dam in a more scientific way to determine how it's functioning. So, when we look at these possible upgrades and the evaluation, the main driver for this is increased capacity. Now, I've talked to you before about how we have plenty of storage capacity and how we can move water around. But this is an incredible opportunity that we probably should not pass up, in my opinion. The good news about Monument Lake Dam is it's functioned very well for about 90 years. No problems, but the past is no predictor of the future. And it is a 90-year-old dam. So, you know, Monument Lake has served four generations. City of Trinidad is a backup water supply and has provided the recreation... the only recreation in the high-altitude area of Los Anamos County. It's the only public recreation. I think by looking at these upgrades and assuring that the dam's going to be functioning for a long time, we will have many more generations that enjoy this asset. One of the things that we've always looked at Monument Lake is we've always called it a backup supply. We need to stop... we need to think of this in a different way. Monument Lake is a backup supply, but it's also an add-on supply. And as we move into the future, both dams will be supplying water to the City of Trinidad. So, it's going to be elevated to the same status as North Lake in the future. That's an important point for me. Okay. So, in 1992, the city... and by the city, I mean Jim Fernandez, asked our engineering consultant to conduct a capacity enlargement of North Lake and/or Monument Lake. We were all standing out on North Lake talking about this. I was a young man at that time. The study was not funded. That was before marijuana, and we didn't have any money. So, this grant will fund that study. That's very important. It's a starting point. When we look at increasing capacity or storage capacity, there's four main challenges. There's land. There's the environment. There's water rights. And of course, there's the cost. So, let's talk about each one of those. First of all, when we look at North Lake or Monument Lake, when you talk about land, that pretty much eliminates North Lake. Highway 12 is right there. There is no room for capacity... for increasing capacity. Monument Lake is the obvious choice. And when we talk about land, we're not acquiring land. We own the land. Most... when you go out and try to build a storage impoundment and you acquire land, you have to go through a major environmental impact study. Because this enlargement would only be raising the height of the dam, there's minimal impact... minimal environmental impact. That should be almost nothing. Water rights. Going out and... you know, you can dig a hole or you can fill the dam, raise a dam, but now you've got to figure out how you're going to get the water there and where's the water going to come from. I've been before council before. I've talked about the exchange decree from Trinidad Lake and also the decree we achieved for the wastewater effluent. That's where the water comes from. So, that's solved. The cost. Governor Owens, a long time ago, asked the seven basins to write water plans to become part of the overall Colorado Water Plan. The Arkansas Basin wrote their plan, and as some of you know, I represented the city on the Arkansas Basin Roundtable. I have a Florida member. But what the result of that plan was that the State of Colorado through the Colorado Water Conservation Board set up a fund for dam enlargement. It was determined at that time that by 2050, the State of Colorado was going to need 500,000 acre-feet more storage to satisfy growth. So, this money was set aside to do that. So, there is money available. When Jim Fernandez first looked at this, the land was not going to be a problem. The water rights and the cost were an issue back then. The decrees that I just talked about, that has solved a lot of these problems. So, it's not the same set of circumstances we had way back then. Way back then, it was a dream. Now, it's possible. Now, it's possible, and my only regret is that Jim's not here with me talking about this because it was his idea. So, additional benefits for this is as you increase the depth of lake, you increase water quality. So, that's a big one. That's a really big one, especially because I operate water treatment plants. And when you increase water quality, it's... of course, you're providing a better product to your customers, but it also affects your own dam. It affects what it costs you to produce that water. Increasing water quality will keep our water rates low or help keep our water rates low. Another benefit is I've talked to you about converting the conditional water rights for our exchange decree from conditional to absolute. Those decrees, that's paper. The physical, you actually have to make it happen physically. You have to go do it. Trinidad has a unique problem. We're kind of water-rich. So, our reservoirs, our impoundments are always full. So, the opportunity to convert these conditional water rights to absolute are rare. I had one opportunity in the last six years. This increased capacity gives us a one-time opportunity to fill that and pretty much convert all those conditional water rights to absolute on a very accelerated pace. That's a rare opportunity. It doesn't come up very often.
Which may be the highest benefit of the entire project.
Which may be. Which may be. So, let's talk about cost. We have a... and it's on a local basis. We have an impoundment being built in Aguilar right now. Their augmentation pond. Because of all these circumstances that I talked about, land, environment, water rights, cost and all that, their cost is about $50,000 per acre-feet. Because we have put all the pieces of the puzzle together and we have all this in place now with the water plan grant, my estimate is that our cost will be somewhere between $1,000 and $2,000. I mean, it's a rare opportunity. The average for the State of Colorado right now is about 7,500, and it goes as high as So, that's why I believe we should pursue this grant. Questions?
Neither.
Well, you were so thorough. I had a gajillion questions.
Yes.
And then you pretty much answered them as I went. So, the original question I had was about where the water was coming from, and you answered that. But what about the water that is leaving that area to fill this area? Is there an environmental hazard to taking that water and producing it into another area?
We're not talking about water rights. We're talking about environment, right?
Right.
Okay. So, once again, I go back to my statement about us being water-rich.
Okay.
And so, once we fill this pool and convert these water rights, I'm back in the same situation I was to start with. I just don't have room for more water.
So, it's not environmental.
Yeah. And so, just to put... get a little more information there. The water we divert to North Lake is direct-flow water rights. It's not storage. I haven't used storage in North Lake in all the time I've been here. North Lake is just a piece of the pipeline. And in all the time I've been here, we've never used more than 60% of our direct-flow rights because I have filled our reservoirs and I just have to let it go. It comes down to Trinidad Lake and part of it becomes our water again, but that's where we're at.
And what about the, I guess, the pool or the hole or the tube used to fill with water? How big is that?
Okay, so Monument Lake surface area is about 100 acres. We will be raising this reservoir by about five feet. And so, it will have minimal impact on the resort. Yeah. There is one short section of road. I'd say it's about 300 feet that will have to be raised, but we're not talking about paving or rubber or anything like that. We're talking about bringing it out.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks. Hiya. That's a lot to observe. So, would we have to expand the dam?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we're... is actually raising the dam higher?
Yes, and the spillway will be expanded, but that was going to be mandated by the state anyway because our spillway, even though they approved it in the past, now it does not meet their standards. So, let me talk a little more about this, about the long term. There's a big difference between dams that are on-stream and dams that are off-stream. Dams that are off-stream don't experience a lot of sedimentation. So, the longevity of Monument Lake and North Lake, if we take care of them, will be very long. Trinidad Lake experiences all the sediment coming down, and it's also subject to catastrophic fire, floods. Well, it's a flood control dam. Monument Lake and North Lake, if I see something really bad coming down, we have substantial storage. I just don't take it. So, that's another big difference.
And so, looking at the grants, you said 263,000 for the grant, and our portion would be 97,000 is what we'd be putting up?
Yes.
And now, that would be coming out of the water fund? Or where would you have money?
No. So, this is the way I see it. Of course, you know, Tara and our finance director, I'll have to wrangle with them, but I'm good.
We have ideas.
I'm up for the fight. So, we have a water rights acquisition fund that has about maybe 2 and 1/4 million in it now.
Sure.
That we just don't use storage of a water right. I think that's appropriate to use that money for that.
Yeah. If there's money available, yeah, to expand it, I would like to see that lake bigger. That'd be awesome.
Yeah. You know, improved water quality and improved recreation is... I think it's a good idea. Yeah.
Mr. Shu?
Well, I don't really have a lot to... I mean, you did a good job. I didn't ask a lot of questions, but curiosity, many, many years ago, at Monument Lake, they had a fish hatchery and pond, and their water ran through there freely because to keep the fish fresh. That water went downstream. Or do we have any right... water rights for that, or how did that work?
So, the history of that is because the water, due to Mother Nature, is interrupted. So, what they found out is that you really can't hatch fish there because the water doesn't stay cold enough because you don't have a constant flow. Now, they did determine that you could raise fish there. If you brought the fries in, you could raise them. But the other part is, you know, we have two leases in Monument Lake. We leased the park to Corin Outfitters, but we actually have the water leased to Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And because we have that water leased to Colorado Parks and Wildlife, they haul in fish for free.
Right.
If we start raising fish, they will stop doing that.
And the reason I ask that because the college had their own fishery in Olivos, and they were thinking about raising fish here. And I don't... I mean, that must have bowed through or something that they had brought it to us a long time ago about doing that. I guess that's kind of went by the wayside. And then, on the dam at North Lake, I can't remember how many years ago. I mean, it was a long time ago, probably before you were there. They did raise the level of the dam there and did some work on it. And because I remember it was closed for a while and they had to redo the dam piping and stuff for going to the water plant. Is that going to affect anything there?
No, you know, I guess two points there. We have since 2002, we have worked on upgrading North Lake Dam to bring it into compliance and also make sure that it's available for the city for the long term. The dam you're looking at is actually the third dam. So, the original dam was up near the inlet. That was about 350 acre-feet. There are no signs... we sent the divers down there. There's no sign of that anymore. It was basically just somebody pushing dirt up. The second dam, you know, as you go around North Lake, you see that kind of little bit of road damage. That dam still exists. It's about 35 feet underwater. When we did the upgrades in 2009, when we were installing the new valves, we breached that dam to make sure we had access to that water. The dam we look at now was built in 1963. That is the latest version of North Lake. Now, when it was determined that... and I need to point this out. You know, when we built the berm below North Lake and rehabbed everything there, it wasn't that the lake was seeping anymore than it ever seeped. The State Engineers Office changed the rules. The factor of safety that was used to design and construct the dam in 1963 is not the same factor of safety that's being used to evaluate the dam today. So, we didn't actually... we installed pessometers. We installed a lot of monitoring equipment. We installed new valves. Because we're going to put that berm there, we decided, well, it's going to be 40 feet underground. Maybe we should replace the pipe, put some new pipe in there. And by the way, we just completed a filter extension about a month ago. And once I get the final survey done, we can put a bow on that project finally after 16 years and say it's complete. So, that is one of the reasons we don't really want to mess with North Lake. We spent a lot of time and a lot of money getting it to the point where everybody's happy. And so...
Yeah. I was kind of wondering because I know they had done a lot of work on that before.
Yeah.
Now, in water storage at the filter plant, is there any plans for future expansion on the water plant itself? Because I noticed... I've been by there a few times in the last month or two, go and check it around. Did you got the pools on the side there that were off the side of the plant or fenced in? What are those basically for? Just a sludge that's...
Yes, that's... you know, there's the south end of everything.
Right.
That eventually you have to dispose of that. Those are disposal ponds, and as long as those residuals are kept on site, we're okay. But we do have the authority to move those residuals to our landfill. And we do every now and then.
But other than no plans for future expansion on there?
So, when we did the 2001 water plan for the City of Trinidad, there were three options that we looked at: expanding that water treatment plant, building another plant down here, and maybe building another plant someplace up there. We're still wrangling with the regulations have changed quite a bit. The... I am very... you know, I know we've always talked about building a water treatment plant down here for redundancy, but the regulations have dramatically increased the cost, not only of the plant because we would have to design for the worst-case scenario, the river and Trinidad Lake. Trinidad Lake's water quality is nowhere near North Lake or Monument Lake, so we would have to design for the worst-case scenario. In addition to that, once you build this beautiful thing, now you have to operate it, and I go back to the operational costs. If you're trying to clean up something that's got maybe... and you talked about the residuals going into those little ponds. If you look at the water quality in Trinidad Lake, some of those residuals may have to go to a hazardous landfill. So, the cost of treating that water would be extremely dramatic. We still do have the problem of redundancy. We have one line and we're dependent on that. If I had my way, I would build a redundant line coming down, bringing that water up there. And that's the reason we went after the exchanges, so we can exchange the dirty water for clean water.
Right.
And I would bring that line down, build a water treatment plant down here, have it manifold into Trinidad Lake just in case. And that way Trinidad would continue to drink fresh customer water as opposed to... God, I shouldn't say this. Toilet-to-tap.
That might be fresh customer.
So, that would be my preference. The other preference that we're kind of kicking around now, and we get back to the land thing, we're looking at maybe the Madridian reservoir side for building a plant.
I was going to say, do we still hold that?
Yes, we do.
We do.
And my thoughts there are I really don't want to take it out of the river. I really don't want to take it out of the lake, but if we punch deep wells and use the exchanges for the water right, then that's a possibility. So, but you have to crunch the numbers, and you know, there's a lot to go through. So, if we started today, which we are, the water plant of Black and Beaches or whoever's writing that for us now, that is taking that into consideration. So, we actually are starting, but going from that to actually having a plant that produces water, best-case scenario, 10 years.
Well, thank you. I appreciate some of that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate your presentation. You know, talking about flood control safety, how often do we assess spillway modifications of any kind? Or what type of modifications need to be met periodically, every so many years?
The spillway modifications, that's kind of come down to how the State Engineers Office has evolved in that. We've learned a lot about earth and dams. Once again, I have to talk about on-stream storage as opposed to off-stream storage. We have off-stream storage, which means we don't have the stringent requirements that a normal dam would have. Most dams, dam spillways are designed with the proper spillway. Monument Lake was not because it was built in 1933. So, I've addressed it once. We put in another pipe. If... and that's sufficient now. But if we wanted to do this expansion, then we would have to address the spillway. And basically, it's just widening, making it wider.
And when you're talking about environmental upgrades, that means allowing fish to migrate, correct? Pretty much?
You know, I don't really want to speak to that because that's not my...
Per view?
Yeah, that's really not... I don't have that kind of expertise.
Okay, just... I just was curious.
Fish do migrate through the ditches that I fill Monument Lake with. Brookies in the stream are about eight inches long. When they get into Monument Lake, they grow to about 12, so it happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramirez, it's such a pleasure to hear from you about this subject because you know so much. And it just, I think, as I sit here and I think about the decisions that you suggest that we make, I know that you're coming from a place of completely understanding the situation and why it would be good for us to pursue this. I just appreciate that. So, I believe you explained that the 97,000 would be covered by, possibly by this water rights acquisition fund?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any sense of what increasing the height of the dam would cost?
That would be a follow-up grant to this grant. And that's assuming that this grant verifies that we can actually pursue this. The engineering, the comprehensive dam safety evaluation was very positive in that aspect. It said that we were a very good candidate for it. So, that would be another dam. And when I think I talked about the cost, that's me putting numbers together based on what I see there and based on my experience with North Lake and Monument Lake, based on my experience with what engineers cost, what it costs to get through the regulations. The... I do have experience with dam construction because we worked on North Lake. So, I would call it an educated guess as much as I'm qualified to do.
But the $263,000 grant that we would match with 97,000, that doesn't cover the cost of construction?
Oh, no.
And have you had any thought of how this would impact our lessor at the resort other than expanding the footprint of the lake? Have they expressed any... yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Yes, they've said, yes, that will be a great idea. Let me talk about the impacts. There is a section of road that we will have to raise. That's not a big thing, that's not a high-dollar thing. Now, we do have, are you familiar with where the store by the shore is?
Yeah.
Okay, and we have the boathouse down there, we have the little beach there. And this is my idea, it's nobody else's idea. I just have a lot of time to think about these things, okay? So, in order to raise the dam five feet, it would impact that little beach. So, my idea is we build a five-foot retaining wall around that arch, backfill with that sand, we have a way for the boats to come up to that retaining wall. It's kind of a docking situation, and we retain that little beach there.
How quickly would the water come? Once this is all in place, how quickly would it be, five feet?
It really depends on the year, but based on the amount of water we have and the capacity of the ditches, I may be able to fill it in a year.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, that's on hand.
Yeah.
Well, you know, when you first started your presentation, I have four challenges. And I'm still trying to figure out what your challenges are. Because you have them, but you have a solution to them. So, in my mind, they're not challenges. They're just things that you, solutions to problems that you've come up with. Well, you know.
You, when it comes to water and water storage, you always have to take the long view. I've talked to council before, and this is not about us, about, nobody's sitting in this room here. This is about your grandchildren's grandchildren. And we are standing on the shoulders of people four generations ago. And it's, we're here in time and place, we need to do our part. But in my mind, it's easier to put all these little pieces in place as you can, as the opportunities come up. We are fortunate, we put all these little pieces in place, and now that the opportunity is here, we can pounce.
Yeah. Well, you know, I was up at Monument Lake two weeks ago, and that area is just teeming with people now. It was even before the holiday. I mean, the turnaround that the outfitter did to that, I can, it's a win-win. We increase our water rights and we increase our recreational use of Monument Lake, which means that we have more people coming. You know, in my opinion, water rights are the most important thing that this community has.
You know, I was talking to Mr. Rosetti about this prior to us being in this session. You know, if you need more electricity, you call San Isabelle. If you need more gas, you call Colorado State Gas. If you need more water, that's a little tougher. It takes long-term planning. Fortunately, I happen to be standing next to Mr. Fernandez at the right time.
Why can't you stand on your own, Mr. Ramirez? You know, I'm excited about this project, I think. We need just a, not a vote, but a vote of confidence, I think we need to continue. I mean, I see Trinidad growing in population. You know, every year it grows a tad. There's surrounding areas, and if we don't have water, we're not going to grow.
Right.
So, thank you.
Okay.
I take, excuse me, your word as gospel.
Well, I do.
I've seen you operate for eight years, man, you've been on the mark every year. So, thank you. Anything else?
Okay.
All righty.
They didn't ask you if you could put the monument back?
Oh, so I do have a plan?
Do you?
I can ask that occasionally.
You know, but one of them, one of them I can't do anymore. I was thinking that originally, instead of raising the height of the dam, that we were going to have to check it below. I think that option's gone. I was, if we were going to check it below and raise it that way, I was going to put a fake rock on top of, the Disney people-built rock on top of the old dam, and we would have the rock back. My other plan is a hologram.
I don't know. Why not? It's a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
All right.
Good deal.
Are you here for the water augmentation overview?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
So, water augmentation, and this all comes back to the exchange decrees and storage in Trinidad Lake and everything Mr. Fernandez started and I worked on since. First of all, I'd like to start with, there's two terms that are out there. There's augmentation plan, and there's substitute water supply plan. From an engineering point of view, they are the same. From, if you look at curing an out-of-priority depletion, they are the same. What's difference is, the difference is an augmentation plan is water court. And so, anybody withstanding can oppose in court, and they also retain a ten-year jurisdiction. A substitute water plan is more of a short-term lease. Think of a construction project, or an event, or something like that. An augmentation plan is water court, a water judge or a water referee. A substitute water supply plan is approved by Division II Water Resources. It does not go to water court. The approval or disapproval has to meet the same criteria. The difference is you're not in water court, and you don't have people standing in front of you. So, I wanted to make that part clear. We do, one of the situations we're in in Trinidad is we are the only entity with consumable, fully consumable water. Does everybody know what I mean by fully consumable? Okay, when we buy water off an irrigated property, we convert that to fully consumable. Now, we give back part of that water for return flows, when a return flow is evaporation, transit losses. But once we have made it through water court, and that percentage is ours, which is usually about 65%, once we get that water into our impoundment or reservoir, then we can use it for ag, recreation, industry, or domestic. We have full use of it. We can carry it over from year to year, we can use it anytime you want, as opposed to like ag water, you're only allowed to use it from April 15th to October 15th, and that's all you're allowed to use it for. So, we are the only entity that actually has fully consumable water in a sufficient quantity to provide augmentation water for the valley. And so, why do we augment it? Mostly, part of it is because somebody has a cute little pond that's been there for a hundred years, and suddenly, the water commissioner has shown up and saying, hey, you're not being charged for evaporation or transit loss, or something's wrong here, and you've got to come up with an augmentation plan if you want to keep your pond. Some people have the wherewithal to do that, and they come knocking on our door, because there is no other door to knock on. But there are some of them that are necessary for our community. One of the, one of the ours we have is Trinidad School District, twenty acre feet a year. Well, that's for football fields, that's for our community, that's why we do it. The other is, is in 2017, we were approached by Pioneer and XTO. The wells that they were pumping were determined to be tributary to the river and causing injury. The reason, there were two reasons we stepped in. One is that we were the only entity that had the ability to do it. The other is, is there were about seven hundred high-paid jobs up there that were online. We did the same thing with Basin Resources. It's about the economy. There are smaller leases we have, there are businesses associated. And once again, this is just my opinion, but our valley here is, we can't separate our economies. We all live off the river, we all, you know, everybody, this is the economic hub of the valley. And so, we do need to support, I guess I would call it, business slash industry. And so, right now, we have seven long-term leases. By long-term, our average is fifteen years. The total is about sixty-seven acre feet. To put that in perspective, the amount of water that we transfer up to Trinidad Lake every year varies from about fifteen hundred acre feet to maybe two thousand acre feet. So, it's someplace between three and six percent of our total change every year. About a third of what evaporates our pool every year. So, it's a drop in the bucket. But we do support our economy, doing this, by doing this. There are two other leases, augmentation plans, but we are basically augmenting ourselves. Central Park, the Cedar Street, Philling Station. That is a combination of sixty acre feet, and once again, that benefits the city of Trinidad. But we are augmenting ourselves. Future augmentation plans? Oh, by the way, every one of these plans is interruptible. If the city needs that water, we will take it, and that's in the contracts. So, once the augmentation plan is in place, everybody's approved, and all the opposers are okay with it, now we have to enter it to a lease agreement with these parties. And we're working on modifying those lease agreements and approaching new lease agreements. I can tell you right now, all the agreements are in good standing.
Because they're an age of fifteen years, most of you, even those of you who've been on council for eight years may not have seen this yet. That's why we're talking about it here.
Nobody's, Frank.
So, I do want to talk a little bit more about that. You know, the augmentation water lease agreements are not the same as the water sales that we sell to the River District. And once again, when we sell water to the River District for the farmers out east, we're supporting Los Angeles County's economy. But once again, I get back to this, our buckets are full thing. If we don't do something with that water, we have to spill it, and we lose all the value. So, I'm also playing that game.
Okay. You're the chess master.
And that's dynamic, it's every year's different, every year's different. And I think that's what I've got, unless.
I think we'll be seeing one of these leases in an upcoming council meeting. I don't know if it's going to make the fifteenth, but it will for sure be the first of August, and we will have the person here representing the lease. But rather than bringing them to you one by one in a work session, Mr. Ramirez agreed to talk about what those are, so that you can have questions now. I think the other thing we want to say is, we met with the water attorney, Madeline. It was Madeline's last name.
Yeah, Wallace Gross. Wallace Gross.
Ms. Wallace, and she went through the new lease agreements that we're updating. I think what we want to say, maybe in general, is we've agreed to increase the amount for water, three percent every year, renewable on January 1, and that is a change. So, they'll be the same price in '26. We are thinking two agreements will come before you this year. And it'll be the same price in '26 as it was this year, and then in '27 on January 1, it will re-up. They pay the lease for the year by January 31st for the entire year. I think, was there anything with our conversation with Madeline that we wanted to touch on?
The only other thing is that we did have provision for late payment.
Yes, we did, thank you. Provisions for late payment were added into the subdated lease.
I'm not, you talk about money, I talk about enforcement of the augmentation agreements. Once a year, we have to prove to Division of Water Resources that the augmentation plan and the lease is in good standing. So, we need that payment, because that fulfills that contract, and we can say that the lease is in good standing. We're required to do that, so.
Since these are fifteen, and we're looking at a twenty-year lease, that's why we're adding the three percent every year. In the past, we've just held the same price for fifteen years. So, in this case, we're trying to address.
Frank will be the only one that's going to be here in 2020.
Okay. Fair enough. So, when we bring the first one forward in the next few weeks, you'll get a look at that, agree on it? Okay?
Yeah, might bring some clarity to it, because water rights.
Do you want to explain how they pull it out of the water upriver, and then we put it back in downriver?
Yes, so, and once again, I have to talk about history. When this area was founded, the communities of Honi, El Moro predate Trinidad. And so, all of the senior water rights are down below Trinidad Lake. Any possible injury, especially during low flows, that's when you experience those injuries, those are the people that are going to get injured. So, if, let's say, we lease water upstream, they take it out of priority, then we release an equal amount out of Trinidad Lake to make those parties out east whole. That's how it works.
That's how augmentation, okay. Does that help?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
Really fascinating, I didn't know. I've been having a headache going on.
That's very large.
It seems like, is it something that we, you know, we're trying at some level to bring economic development to Trinidad? And one thing that I think that we have to stress is our wealth of water, and that we are willing to go into that kind of an agreement.
And I agree with you, but it's not just wealth of water. We need to stress quality of water. We have incredible water. It's rare, it's rare in communities in Colorado, there are very few of us.
When I was in Breckenridge, the CML conference last week, I laughed, because all of their purified water things, it just says Breck tap water.
You shouldn't do that.
It's Breck tap water. It was good.
You know, you have any questions?
Gil, I just had a question, may not, I don't know. Talking about augmentation, can you treat reusable wastewater for like non-potable purposes?
Yes, you can, and that is an option that communities that are water-short pursue, because they really don't have access to water. You know, even if they have money, it's just not there. And so, you know, there are many communities, Aurora's doing it, there's San Diego, there's a place down there on Paso Texas that do that. Yes, you can, you can treat water, the space station, they treat their, you know, it's possible, but very expensive, extremely expensive.
Ours is in Kansas.
Frank.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, I'm still absorbing, but thank you. I always enjoy hearing you speak, thank you so much.
Appreciate you, and you laid a lot of stuff on me, you did it in such a layman terms way, then I felt like I'm the water treatment guy. You did a good job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm going to wait until that first thesis, so I can actually see it in black and white, so I'll understand it.
And that will have everything I talked about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Once again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gil.
Item number three is November 2025, regular municipal election.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. At the next regular meeting, your next regular meeting on July the 15th, City Council will be asked to approve the resolution to coordinate our regular elections with Los Angeles County on November the 4th. In addition to there being three seats for City Council, the mayoral seat open, it'll also be time to ask for our CIP, it'll be time to put our CIP ballot question back on the ballot. In your packet, I have provided an informal announcement and a calendar just for your information. I know that sometimes you get questions regarding certain aspects of the election, and I thought it would be a good time to put that out. and I thought it would be a good time to put that out for you. The informal announcement's also on the city's website, just so it's handy. Again, it'll be formalized a little bit closer to time. And then, city manager Marshall and our city attorney Downs will be discussing CIP, the CIP question. Do you have any questions, Ammon? If not, I will, just see.
Do we have any ballot issues to work in?
That's what we're about to talk about.
Just now.
Thank you, Marjorie.
We do not anticipate, although we've been approached with some additional ballot measures, we do not anticipate seeing those this year. What we would like to talk to you about today regarding CIP is, this was first passed in nineteen-eighty. I don't know if you realize that's forty-five years we've been collecting this tax. We've been asking for it to be renewed every four to six years in that timeframe, and we wanted to propose to council that we might put it on the ballot as a permanent tax this time. Now, the CIP doesn't expire until twelve-thirty-one twenty-twenty-six, so if we were not successful with making it permanent this year, we would be able to come back. But after forty-five years, we thought perhaps we might look at that, and wanted to gauge your interest on that. I do also have a list that our engineering department put together, and we can talk about this as well, of the things we've been able to do with CIP. And then, I think when we come back closer to time with ballot language, once we figured out how you want to present this on the ballot, then we can talk about the specifics around campaign finance, law, and lobbying, and Mr. Downs will be doing that for you in August, I believe, unless you have questions today. So I guess first, we wanted to poll council and see how you, where your thoughts are on making this, trying to go to the voters to request this as a permanent tax.
Ammon, we'll start with you.
And when was the last time we collected this tax?
Five years ago, it went onto the ballot.
Was it every five years?
It's been every four to six years, depending on.
Which is the percentage on that tax?
We've, oh, it's a one percent tax. We charge four percent sales tax, three percent goes to the general fund, one percent goes to the capital improvement fund. This is the one percent.
I'm not against that amount of tax being collected.
It's been approved many times.
Being collected permanently, so that'd be great, that's cool.
You're okay with seeking to make it permanent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I've questioned this quite a few times, trying to figure out why we have to constantly renew some of these tax initiatives. Honestly, I believe this, yeah, it should be a permanent tax because it has been one of the most beneficial taxes that we have collected, that we use constantly, so.
It has, I would say the fear is, if it didn't pass, it would be devastating to the city and our ability to complete projects.
Forty-five years is kind of pretty, like, permanent without saying that, yeah. I didn't mean to interrupt.
And just, once again, we just have to go through, just remind people, they have been painless. It has been there, it's not a new tax, and it's just how we sell it, once again, in the beginning, to see if we can get that information out there.
Frank?
No, I think it's fine. The only issue is, you're going to have to sell it to people. No matter what you say on the tax, even though it's passed, you're going to still have to. And if you do pass it, or it's on permanent ballot or whatever, we're going to want to do with it. If we ever decide to change it to add a half a cent or a quarter cent or something to it, do we have to redo the whole thing?
Yes. Yes. You can't even amend a word of what would be used for it without going back to the voters.
In the essence of time and money, yes, make it permanent.
Well, thank you.
I think that gave us some marching orders and how to put this together, but we will be coming back to you at another work session to talk about the campaign for this, unless we'll, or Mr. Downs will explain the limitations that staff's going to have in going to the voters for this, as we won't be allowed to go out and lobby for it, it's part of our job. And then I will start getting together a list. I guess your assignment might be to think of some community members who might be willing to work with us to go out and help sell this. In the past, we've done table tents, we've done surveys, we've done advertising. I think at one point, we were putting flyers in the bags at Safeway. I think we were putting things anywhere we could to talk about what capital improvement had done. And we'll start with this list, putting together the banners that say this project was paid for with capital improvement tax, which is really important. And it's on the train, if you haven't seen it, please look.
We, once we see that list of projects, and we could probably get an idea.
We've got the new basketball courts at Los Ninos, we've got the dog park, the swimming pool, our community pool was paid for it, our skate park, the soccer complex, pickleball is going out of capital improvement. Alley A is another ongoing capital improvement project. Americana Road, the animal shelter is one. The boathouse at Monument Lake. I'm just skipping around here, but there's a pretty long list, here's things we've done.
We can do something in the voter pamphlet.
We can also write in.
It will be working with ballot language, and I think it will help too, that we can kind of begin by saying, without raising taxes, I mean, that's not very legal, but beginning with something to that effect, so they know that it's not a proposed tax increase.
Then, of course, the fallback is, if we don't get it, we will go in twenty-six again.
All right. Any questions?
Audrey, did you have anything to add?
No.
All right. Last item on the agenda, this is Santa Fe Trail Fest, we'll repeat.
That's why Felicia was, that's why you were.
I know, I didn't know if I should walk into a box, sorry for this one.
Do you want the clicker?
Yeah, probably.
I don't know, that's perky.
That called it.
Pretty amazing.
He gave us permission to use it.
How neat.
And so we've used it also on the banners this year that we put out. Beautiful, very nice.
So thank you, Ms. Taves.
Hi, Mayor, hi, council, Mr. Downs. Thanks for letting me come talk about Santa Fe Trail Fest yet again, appreciate it. This year, the festival was a great success, at least to us, who worked it, we think so. We saw strong community turnout, so for Friday, we had two thousand wristbands, and we ran out about, I want to say about eight o'clock, and we still had people coming in. Saturday, we had three thousand wristbands, and we ran out around six-thirty, I believe. So we had well over, I would say, six thousand people, just between Friday and Saturday. Doesn't even include all the people who scurried their way in somehow, some way that we didn't catch, right? Along with that, it was such nice weather. It was warm, it was hot, but it didn't rain on us like it did last year. It was just great, the weather was perfect. We had a lot of positive feedback from people who attended and our vendors. They were really impressed with our layout this year, you know, not being on the slant on animals here. A lot of the vendors really appreciated that. The music being down here, I just think that the layout was a great idea. It was a true celebration, featuring a lot of local and surrounding area performers, which we always welcome them back. We had a lot of family-friendly activities. For those of you that did come out, were able to come out, we had our carnival again this year with selective rides, and the kids, so the kids really enjoyed that with their families. They were out there when it was so hot. I cannot believe how many children dragged their parents out there to go and ride these rides. It was phenomenal. All the food, they ended up even running out of food. So next year, we might need to get a couple more food vendors, but it was a really good variety of food that we had this year. We're going to start with this slideshow here, just to recap, with some pictures with what we had going on.
Just as long as they're not incriminating. Like the Browns' strike against.
So we had the Flag Day from the Elks, the presentation. The Color Run, and that was new this year. I think we had about thirty attendees with the Color Run.
It's like a mishap, not intentional.
And if you guys saw the Blackie the Rocks, they were covered in the colors, they had a really good time. And then, of course, all of our entertainment being free due to our sponsors was incredible. And our performers.
I can't think of you.
And then the duck race.
There's Chief up in the ducks.
Yep.
Good technique there on the box.
That's right.
With the duck race.
Were the mariachi dancers well received?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, I think it was a good turnout for them. It was really warm, so maybe if we do it again, keep in mind, yeah, how warm a night get, and, yeah, later in the evening. And then, of course, the kids area. Our zip line, that was really neat this year, that was really, really neat. And the Mind Minder, actually, we had kids going on there trying to make themselves puke all day, all day. And then the obstacle course, that was a big one, too. And then horseshoes. I think Charles made some money that day. Oh, and this is really cool this year. The shootout. Yeah, they were amazing. We had a lot of positive feedback about that, too. And then, of course, our vendors, they were amazing, they really held it out with us. There are some things that we'll do differently next year, like not as late of a check-in, and I think we'll even get more vendors next year, and they all had a good time. I don't think that we had anybody say very, like, anything negative at all. We've already had people on our list to come back for next year, like, immediately. They were fantastic. And of course, all of the people that came. And this is just early Saturday evening. I wish that we would have gotten pictures later Saturday evening at night. There were so many people out there dancing, just really enjoying their time. This looks like Friday night. And then, of course, a huge thanks to all of our Ways in Blue, fire, police, sheriff department, ambulance, Rich's crew, they were all phenomenal. They deserve major kudos. And of course, our sponsors. We had an extremely amount of generous sponsors this year, which will lead me into our financial summary. It's going to outline the cost and revenues from this year's event and comparing it to last year. We were able to remain within budget. If you guys recall, Kim and I got up here and asked for an additional fifteen thousand dollars that you guys allowed us, and out of that, we only ended up using a thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Yes, yeah. Again, because of our sponsors, we had an overwhelmingly amount donated from them. Our vendors and our sponsorship income, you'll see that's where the contributions, donations, and sales was located. And then, of course, what we spent on the festival, a big decrease from last year for sure.
So contributions went up, expenses went down.
Yes, that's right, that's right, exactly. And we also provided a boost to many local businesses. We had some businesses even call us and thank us because they did get foot traffic in their businesses throughout the weekend, so that's a positive, too. We wanted them to go and visit all of our people down on Main Street, Commercial, anybody and everybody. That's it? Okay. So, and I can get you guys copies of that if you want. So that ends our slideshow, but talking about money, because that's a big thing in all of us. We've already begun planning for next year's festival, which will be held at the end of June of twenty-twenty-six. We have a carnival this year, a legit carnival, which is essentially free to the city. So this year, we had to rent out each individual ride that we got. So just for example, the zip line was fourteen thousand dollars. Yes, so we are having Sun Ballet come next year, and we don't get any of the proceeds, but it doesn't cost us to have them here. So they'll be here Wednesday to Sunday next year, so that's exciting. In addition to that, we've already secured some exciting country music for entertainment for next year as well. We're looking forward to building on the momentum from this year, and with the early head start, we're confident that twenty-twenty-six will be bigger and better next year.
And we'll have that corridor from that last weekend in June, later in June, through the Fourth of July into August first, which is when Trinidad turns a hundred and fifty years old, the nation turns two hundred and fifty years old, and Colorado turns a hundred and fifty years old. So we'll have a six-week span there, starting with Carnival and the festival to celebrate our hundred and fifty years.
Ammon, you can't say that word.
Yeah, it sounds real exciting from what you guys did last year to what's going on this year and to what's going to happen in the future. Appreciate you guys' hard work, that's very impressive for festival town and tourism, so hopefully it catches some traction and remains part of Trinidad's future.
Felicia, let me interrupt. Didn't you also have a lot of vendors say that they wanted to come back next year? Lucky that they've already made a reservation.
Yes, yes, a lot of them have, and a lot of people who were not vendors, so we ended up having several. And when I say several, I would say probably fifteen to twenty people who came after the deadline up until the day of the festival, who wanted to be a vendor. Of course, we couldn't, I mean, our space was limited, so we couldn't get everybody in, but we do have them down. We have quite a few people down on our list already.
And we're already starting this month with our meetings for next year and looking at other ways to monetize the festival as well.
Thank you for having such a great festival. Yeah, and, yeah, through the vending community, yeah. It was a great turnout and good, positive feedback all the way through. And I think just growing and growing is one of the main things we can be known for, for that festival. You know, expanding it through, we do have the area to do it, so we could. Thank you for all your hard work, and watched you guys work tirelessly on this, so thank you.
And I believe Ms. Taves thanked all of the city departments, but I would personally like to thank the clerks. The city clerk's office took on this year, they went from, like, with just weeks, twenty-something vendors to sixty-three. They ran the show, they're the best, and they're heading it up starting early this year, so. As well as taking on the special event permitting and parks permitting. So our three city clerks are pretty amazing, and they're getting their hands around this type of work.
No, just a great job, I couldn't have did any better. So we improved the next year's rate, so that was really good.
rate, so that was really good, thank everyone that was involved in it.
Eli?
Hi, Felicia.
Hi, Eli.
I, I enjoyed our interview over the radio.
Yes.
And I enjoyed the layout design, I think it was very becoming, it was just perfect the way it was laid out, kind of perpendicular to the train depot, the train station, and it was, and I got, received a lot of good feedback, I interviewed vendors and dignitaries like Les and. A lot of people in general throughout Saturday, and it was a nice showing, it was really nice. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, you all did. An outstanding job, really did, and I think it's a good use of lodging tax funds, I think what I see about this festival that I think is, is true, is that it's more like a party for Trinidad. A big party, and Trinidad needs a big party, and so I think that's a good use of money. I do, however, would like us to more broadly let people know in this region about it, because I think they would enjoy being here, too. And I think, I, I think that's one thing that we're not quite missing, but as the reputation of this continues to thrive, I think it will naturally bring people in, but I think that lodging tax could effectively be used to tell other people about it. One thing about the carnival, I wanted to ask, how would the rides be paid for then? Because our rides were free to the kids, would the carnival cost something to people?
So the carnival would cost? I, I don't know what they charge, if I had assumed, it'd probably be like $35 a wristband and, I think a dollar ticket, and you know, so many tickets per ride, but.
We did charge for tickets this year.
Yes, we did.
So it wasn't free.
Tickets at radio station that we gave, that we were selling because it was in Raton, and there were different prices for different, yeah, levels.
And that's how we're using the sub-balance.
Yeah, we've been interviewing them for like five years now, from Alamosa.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, they were just there, they said.
And is the thinking that it would still be over in the Sebastiani football fields, which would be cool from the road, you know, if you see the lights.
Lights.
Yeah, it'd be really fun, yeah, great job.
Yeah, thank you.
That's it? The light.
That's right.
For future, it would be nice if you could break out what our sponsor fee revenue was, the sales revenue was, and the donation revenue was, that way we can see next year where that money's coming from, I, I think it would be easier. And, you know, I, I, when we had marijuana and everything was going great, it's sometimes people think that this is kind of frivolous to have this, but I, I've been on council long enough to see how devastating this community was, when we lost Artic, we lost the Blues Fest rodeo, this used to be a big thing in Trinidad, the Labor Day, that's gone the wayside, too, and I think, you know, as long as $31,000 isn't a whole lot of money per se, and I think it's, it's a morale booster for the community. And I think if we look at what we did from last year to this year, not quite, what is it, $14,000 less in expenditures, so as you guys continue and perfect what you do, the expenditures will probably go down, and maybe one of these days, we'll make a buck or two.
We might.
But it's not always about money. It's not always about money. I think this is a big quality of life issue. And, you know, when you talked about the layout, because I was downtown during, when the festival was going on, and it seemed like the downtown merchants weren't affected.
Right.
And that was a big item for me, so that was good. That's it.
I just wanted to add just a couple of quick things, so you asked about the breakdown.
Yeah.
Sponsors, the cash value that the city received from sponsors was $31,951. It's actually, it exceeds the amount of lodging tax that we used.
Okay.
And then, ticket sales, $9,685, that would be for the games and the rides, and then the tourism lodging tax funds made up the difference, and that's the $31,352.
Okay.
And then, the only other thing I wanted to point out to you is that, you know, city council always has a, a really big hand in what happens in the community, especially festivals, activities, and I agree that it's not always about the revenue, a lot of it's about building sense of community and giving your community something to really enjoy, and there are families that visit, something to remember. As a comparison, the fireworks show, which, again, nothing but raves. Everywhere, raves, 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 city council commits $33,265 to that show, and it's, you know, it's a small window of time, but talk about well-received, again, it's, it's just great that the community has these things, so.
Thank you.
And we've already had quite a few people sign up for the scavenger hunt.
Yes.
Which kicks off our 150th year, so this is the first of events. No, that's not it. You go to our website to find out.
Okay.
Mrs. Goriosa was here Tuesday night to talk about it. Okay. We're starting with a little historic preservation scavenger hunt, and then we'll have events throughout the year.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anything else we need to discuss? Okay, our next meeting is July 15th, it's a regular meeting for city councils, so we'll see you all. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.